Did you have some?
Well, since I sponsored it, should I?
Yeah, if you want to give an overview.
You want me to hit this so that you have a recording?
Sure. Thank you.
First off, I just want to explain to the public that the sponsorship comes from the chair of the CRA. So, since I sit in that seat, anything that comes from the CRA comes over here under my name. But I do want to also make sure that what we kind of have it on the ground here, that what we are here for is to only debate whether we demolish or not. That's the only thing on the table right now, is whether we demolish this gym or not. It's not about what our plans would be in the future if we make one or the other choice. That's not determined. And that has not been determined by anyone or defined. So, this decision right here is whether we think Malcolm Young should come down. So, I just want to make sure that that is said and understand what it is we're debating, is whether we demolish or not, not what the future plans for that site would be either way. I just want to make sure I say that.
Thank you, Councilwoman Brer. Alright, so we're going to move to the public speakers at this time. We do have 15 speakers today so far.
Seventeen.
Seventeen, okay. We've got 17 speakers. We're not going to shorten the time. We want to make sure we hear from everybody and give you your time up here. Everyone will have three minutes to speak. And please state your name for the record. We're going to start with Patricia Rourke.
Good afternoon. Hi, I'm Patricia Rourke. I live on Biotohart. I am a homeowner. I have been very unhappy with the city tearing buildings down that are either historical, architecturally interesting, available to the public, and replacing them with public interest. I think it's wrong. I think that the gym should be restored. When you go to other countries, they restore their buildings. They don't tear them down and put up something inferior. The community has already lost the basketball, volleyball, pickleball, whatever, a baby park. It was well-used. They had a gym. Now, all it is is a meeting room. Nothing. There's nothing for anybody but outdoor facilities. It just doesn't seem right to take away something for the public and turn it over to the private interest. I'm totally against it. I think you could hire a structural engineer, somebody reputable that would not be biased, hire an architectural firm to restore it, and to keep an interesting building that's part of our unique look of Pensacola. Thank you.[226.12][226.12](APPLAUSE)
Thank you, Ms. Rourke. Our next speaker is Teresa Hill.
Hello, Council President, City Council. Hello, Mayor. I just heard CRA Chair talk about a plan. This is about demolition or not demolition. Where's the plan? I mean, every one of you guys on your platforms have said that you're here for the plans. There's no plan yet. When you have a leaking roof, you don't demolish your home. You know, we have a structural issue possibly. That's debatable. You know, I've seen all the reports you guys have, but I've also seen other people come up here and say that for a guarantee of 225, they can get those arches completely structurally sound. You know, have any of you looked in the window of the gym? It's perfect. The gym floor is beautiful. I mean, kids were playing there not even a year ago. New is not always better. I mean, lack of patience is what lost us to San Carlos. What did we get in its place? We got one giant block that was full of mildew, you know, and they had to rebuild it. I won't even go into the Hallmark. I mean, that monstrosity, you know, that happened over there that was supposed to be so much better for walkability and all this. I mean, maybe it's gotten better, but not in my opinion. Yes, I do. My family has a home downtown. So, how many plans have been sitting on our shelves? I mean, why is there not a plan for this? Why are we demolishing it before anybody's come forward and said, yes, we're going to build 30 affordable houses that are going to actually be for someone that can work on minimum wage? I mean, why are we pulling the car before the horse? So, that's basically all I have to say. Just, you know, take a look at why we're demolishing it before we even know what we're going to do with it. And then look at everyone here behind us. I mean, we're not the only ones, but people use this gym for pickleball, volleyball, tutoring. It was never a one-trick pony. I don't know where that came from. Yes, Lighthouse used it, but it was also used by the City of Pensacola. We just need to shore up the arches. It makes no sense to demolish it. You know, how much did we spend to study hashtag? You know, how much did we spend on a tech park that's still empty? I mean, when you don't have a plan, you have Maritime Park sitting there for years and years. So, we're going to have an empty lot when we have a gym right now that all you have to do is spend 225, shore the arches up, and then let's see what we have from there. Thank you.[378.47][378.47](APPLAUSE)
Thank you, Ms. Hill. Next speaker is Sherri Myers.
Good afternoon. I'm still Sherri Myers. I still live at the same address. And so, I know quite a bit about Malcolm Young. I've been on council, or was on council, for 12 years. And I've come to the conclusion a long time ago that I've been told a lot of lies and misinformation about Malcolm Young, starting with our former park director, Brian Cooper, who came to me and asked me if I would support a $1.2 million soccer complex at Mallory Park. And in exchange for my support, he said, I know how we're going to come up with the money to build a community center at Tippin Park. He said, we're going to surplus Malcolm Young, and you got $700,000 in LOST funds. And I asked him, I said, well, what is it being used for? Oh, nothing. You know, some senior citizens use it a little bit, and whatever they're using it for over there, you know, they can go someplace else. I didn't know anything about Malcolm Young. I mean, it wasn't in my district or something that we had discussed a lot on council. But when it came up for a vote, we learned that Lighthouse had an MOU to use that gym as part of their curriculum. I was shocked. I had not been told that. And so, that was a turning point for me. I didn't want it surplus. So, what we did is we gave the $700,000 in LOST to McGee Field, and we said, we want Lighthouse to use this. And I was the person, I believe I am, that came up with the idea of giving them a 30-year lease so that they could borrow the money on a 30-year lease. Because we have a real estate attorney here and a mayor who has very knowledge about real estate. So, when you have 30-year leases, you can, you know, get loans better. I never anticipated that Malcolm Young would be demolished. And I don't think it should be. And I am very familiar with that community. And let me tell you, it is being gentrified. The type of houses that are being built there are audacious, big. They're buying up little cottage-type houses and bungalow-type houses and replacing them with huge, the typical huge, treeless, you know, large houses that, in my opinion, is destroying the character of the neighborhood. Now, I do believe that we should save Malcolm Young. I think that this item should be tabled or pulled all together and go back to the drawing board. Because we do have the money. We honestly do have the money. Because every mayor, every council I've ever dealt with, when they want a project done, you know, I know, we'll come up with the money. We do.[581.82][581.82](APPLAUSE)
Thank you, Ms. Myers.
You've got a beautiful room here. I'm so jealous that I didn't get to sit up there and enjoy this. But it's beautiful, very functional. Congratulations. Anyway, at least I can come here and speak. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jeff McCarthy. Jeff McCarthy?
Hey, good afternoon, Council. My name is Jeff McCarthy. I own a property in the city. So, I'm a professional engineer. I'm also a proud parent of a Titans player. And I've been able to see what this program has done for the youth of the city. You've got a bunch of dedicated adults, these children, that are giving these kids opportunities. But they have a basketball program that's tied with education enrichment. And without basketball or gym facilities, it really puts a hamper on the ability to keep these kids in a place, teach them teamwork, sportsmanship, and also give them a good education. But specifically, I want to talk about the structural issues at the Malcolm Young Gym. We have done a lot of research on the back end. We have been on WebEx's and Zooms consulting with professionals around the country about how to help this gym. These Glulam arches, there's a company called Quake Wrap. We've spoken to Professor that works for them. And for that budgetary number that was presented last time, they are confident they can repair those Glulam arches. I know there's a lot of numbers thrown around about, well, what about a million dollars for windows and HVAC and lights and doors and paint and bathrooms? That's not what we need right now. We need to fix these Glulam arches, and then the kids can get in the gym. We can make sure the HVAC works. The other stuff, windows and paint and all that stuff can come down the road. But the reality is that it's not a million-dollar project to fix this gym at this point. These Glulam arches can be wrapped with a carbon fiber resin epoxy, and they will meet the original intent of this building. There'll be a professional engineer that'll sign off on that with their liability. So, I think that the board needs to consider that you've got a space. And for, you know, some value a dollar, you know, $300,000, $400,000, you can make that a functional space for the youth again. You know, to go back and try to build a 10,000-square-foot building, you're going to take two to three years, and it's going to be probably 10 times what you would have done to just repair this gym to get it open. So, I'm just asking the council to consider not demoing the gym, given that, like, really reviewing this and seeing if this is something that you guys would support so that we can keep youth in the gym. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCarthy. Our next speaker is Jasmine Brown.
Good afternoon. I'm Jasmine Brown. I am a Pensacola resident, but I do not own property, and I'm not a business owner. I'm here today to urge you to not uphold the decision to demolish the Malcolm Young Center without a plan of replacing or repairing it to continue serving the community. The historical location represents the goals of many of the members of the community, including some people here today, who want to see available, accessible, and abundant community centers where young people can engage in positive activities. It wouldn't make sense that a building is closed due to safety concerns, but it does not make sense for a community center to be completely taken away from the people it previously served. The summary of the contract recommendation says Malcolm Young needs to be demolished and redeveloped. Redeveloped for who? The highest bidder? Yes, the mayor claims the site will be turned into affordable housing, but there's no guarantee, especially in the area that it's in. It's in a prime real estate area, right by the water. We've had that trick pulled on us before. And we see that over the past year. Homelessness and I'm in an organization that has done housing outreach and Party for Socialism and Liberation, and we see that many people can't even afford where they live now. If our best chance at affordable housing is a maybe, a probably, I hope so, I'd rather stick with fixing a site whose purpose has already served the community. It seems like this contract is being pushed through with little community input. Meanwhile, people have here tonight and have already advocated on behalf of the community center. Although we can come here and voice our opinions, it seems like demolishing the center is the best business move, and that's all that matters to the city. And that's not what we want to see. We have real community members here who have been here with real concerns, real opinions, and real suggestions. The city can spend $11 million on the Bayview for its resource center. It can spend $4 million on Roger Scott's renovation. It would take around $3 million, at least according to the news, for full repairs to go into Malcolm Young, in which some of our leaders believe it's more trouble than it's worth. There should be no price tag on kids having easy access to indoor basketball courts and other activities. With how hot it gets in the summer, I would rather see dozens more community centers in the city over these new carbon copy apartments with unreasonably high rents. You're telling me the city can't afford the additional amount to fix the Malcolm Young Center all the way up? I think it's worth investing in the community members deserve a city that'll fight to keep its community centers open, not fight to demolish them. Thank you.[932.81][932.81](APPLAUSE)
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Our next speaker is Charlie Dial.
Hello. My name is Charlie Dial. I am a city resident, but I am not a business owner or a property owner. I'm here to speak on the demolition of the Malcolm Young Gym. I am going to connect some dots, but it is all with the Malcolm Young Gym in mind. We came here a year ago urging this body to declare a state of housing emergency because we had just spent months surveying hundreds of Pensacola residents and found that 67% of them had considered leaving Pensacola because of housing costs. 31% were spending more than half of their income on housing, and 76% were either behind on rent or one missed paycheck away. You told us that you had affordable housing initiatives cooking and that we should just let you do it. Back in July, we came to the county's gun violence roundtable where everyone and their mama told them that the solution to gun violence is providing the affected community with resources. We mentioned mentorship programs, rehabilitative programs, and athletic programs. Commissioner May told us that he had all of those cooking and that we should just let you do your thing. Since then, we haven't seen any of these claims come to fruition. What we have seen is the Downtown Improvement Board expropriating funding meant for affordable housing to beautify downtown. We've seen y'all break promises made to Just Pensacola that you'd build more affordable housing. We've seen you pay absurd amounts of money to consultants for them to tell us that the solution to homelessness is criminalizing panhandling. And we've seen the PPD deploy two new police units specifically to harass and imprison the homeless downtown. And now we hear that you're planning on tearing down a gym in a working-class neighborhood, a gym that so many people relied on, and opening up the property to development. How are any of us going to believe that you have the people's interest in mind when your actions only ever serve the interests of developers?[1064.42][1064.42](APPLAUSE) You had no, thank you. We all feel like this. We had, you had no problem spending $4 million renovating Roger Scott or $11 million building the Bayview Center because they are in areas that you want to beautify and profit from. I propose that you prove me wrong by voting down this contract and spending whatever you need to spend, which turns out to likely be less than $3 million, to fix Malcolm Young Gym instead of demolishing it. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dial. Our next speaker is Jewel Canada-Wen.
Thank you, Mayor. Council President, I'm Jewel Canada-Wen. I do own property in the City of Pensacola, and I am a city resident. I'm here, physical activity and engagement is important for our children. We already know that. But the City of Pensacola has a lot of play. We have over 96 parks, recreation facilities. We have all of that. We have plenty of play. However, we do not have housing. The Malcolm Young property should be used for attainable housing. Oh, yes, there has been a history of not doing what people expect. But we made a pledge to deal with housing. Housing has come up in the top five. Now, I don't know whether or not, you know, the other people took the survey, but it is something that we need. As a city council educator, parent, sister, and grandparent, I have seen firsthand the difficulties of finding housing in the Pensacola exchequer area. The decision before you is a question of priority. It is a question of need. Surveys again show that attainable housing ranks somewhere in the top in our community, and that's just not from emotions. That is from fact. Our children need places to sleep, not just places to play, not just in a parking lot where they sleep. Our children need a place to take a bath, not just wash their bodies at a gas station. Our children need the stability and decent housing and families for attainable housing solution. Pensacola has enough play. Let us utilize the facilities that we have. We have facilities. Groups that are interested in those facilities should be willing to partner with those facilities. We should not establish a domain for one entity or domain for that control. No, it is public property. Continue to stay focused on housing initiatives. It will not happen without you, and we will be continuing to talk about any property that would go for housing and want to be redirected for play. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Canada-Wen. I'd like to remind the public, please don't respond from your seats. Alright, our next speaker is Sam Epstein.
Good evening. My name is Sam Epstein. I am a resident. I do not own property or a business. I am an organizer with the Party of Socialism and Liberation. We elected this mayor and the city council to fight and serve the people of Pensacola, and it's obvious to the people that they aren't here to serve us when it doesn't provide profit for them. Proposing to tear down community centers, not to build another one, not to build so-called affordable housing, but to indirectly make money off people who are suffering. Pensacola is currently in a housing crisis with over 2,000 people experiencing homelessness. Several shelters closed last year due to lack of funds or overcrowding. Rather than upgrading Malcolm Gym that provided community and shelter to an area that is already targeted by gentrification, our tax dollars are currently going to pay for a task, our tax dollars are currently going to pay for a task force dedicated to harassing people experiencing homelessness. We're simply trying to survive another day not freezing to death on the street. City council has allocated $4 million to renovate Roger Scott Complex and $11 million on Bayview Community Center. These spaces are, these spaces that many people who use the Malcolm Young Gym would not be able to access. You have the money and the resources and choose to sell out to developers rather than invest and support our community. Community members are urging you to prove us wrong. Vote down this contract and back off from these plans to demolish what could be repaired. Let's keep our community intact instead of selling it off for profit. Thank you.[1369.51][1369.51](APPLAUSE)
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sarah Brummer.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sarah Brummet. I am a city resident and homeowner. In the last couple of years, I have watched as the City of Pensacola has refused to address the needs of working people, a theme I'm hearing here tonight. Again, the city has refused to address housing affordability, and this situation is not the solution. We've seen y'all pretend to care about the issue only if it means you can give a handout to developers. The city has refused to even investigate the idea of public utilities when Florida Power and Lights predatory vultures took over here and started raising up our bills. The city has demonstrated a stubborn commitment to turning its back on and criminalizing our homeless community. So, who is it that the City of Pensacola is serving? To us, it seems quite clear that Pensacola is serving the developers and the landlords and the profiteers. And so, that's why we're here today, because we want to see that the Malcolm Young Gym be preserved for the people and not given away again to developers. So, why is it that the city, who has spent millions and millions in other parts of the community, can't spend a little bit of money to make Malcolm Young Gym a community center that can be used for generations to come? We are here today to ask you that if you want to prove us wrong, that you don't just serve the developers, that you take this off the table, that you say, we're going to commit to protecting, preserving Malcolm Young Gym, that we're going to commit to meeting the needs of the young people in this community who do not have enough community opportunities, that they do not have enough programming, that they do not have enough places to go, especially in the hot heat of the summer. And if you really do want to be seen as people who serve the community, that's a step you have to take. Do not approve this contract. Do not agree to demolish the gym. Go ahead and commit to fixing the gym. That's our ask. Thank you.[1501.53][1501.53](APPLAUSE)
Thank you. Our next speaker is Fred Gunther.
Mayor Reeves, Council President Jones, members of council. Park is not a gym. You can't equate the two. Y'all have the proposal from Quake Wrap to make Malcolm Young structurally sound again for under $240,000. At the last CRA meeting, it was stated that Lysette and Associates, the Glulamarch expert, did not recommend using Quake Wrap to repair Malcolm Young. What was not stated was why it was not recommended. I, along with our structural engineer, called Michael Stone with Lysette the next morning to find out, and we had a great conversation. You know, Michael's the president of the company, a genuine person, very upfront. He said he didn't know enough about the Quake Wrap application to be able to recommend its use. That's the reason. He also agreed to have a call with us and Professor Mo Isani, the owner of Quake Wrap, to learn more. On that call this week, Michael Stone stated that Lysette would need to do a substantial amount of research and calculations to show that Quake Wrap solution will make Malcolm Young structurally sound. He suggested that if Quake Wrap or other engineers have already done those calculations, that Lysette is not needed. He said the city wanted to hire an outside structural engineering firm to confirm that Quake Wrap solution is structurally safe. It would make more sense to hire one of the many firms that is already experienced with using FRP. A structural engineer does not make a recommendation regarding structural integrity based on a feeling. It's based on rigorous calculations, and these calculations have not been performed by the city's consultants on Quake Wrap's proposed solution at Malcolm Young. This gym is too important to be demolished because the city's consultants are not experienced enough with this method of repair, you know. I want to make it clear that even though we keep coming to these meetings, we're not anti-D.C. Reeves. You know, I'm actually a big fan of the mayor's proposed changes to the parking requirements tonight, you know. But when your child finds something they love to do, you know, there's not a gym space for them to practice. You know, what choice do we have? It's to come down, but to come down here and ask you to, you know, do the right thing, make the right decision, repair this gym. You have several good options. You can hire Quake Wrap to repair it. You can hire a structural engineer experienced with FRP to double-check their calculations, if you like. You can solicit proposals to repair it. You can sell it to James B. Washington Education and Sports, and we'll even agree to give you the option to buy the building back once we're done, plus, you know, cost, plus expenses, you know, after it's completed. If despite these better options, you still want to put the property out for RFP, at least do it with the building intact, with the requirement that the buyer have the building repaired, certified as safe by a Florida licensed engineer, and share use of the building with City Parks and Rec. In closing, we want to be your partner in saving this building, and we'll help in any way possible. Surely, we can do that, but you must start by voting against the demolition tonight. These kids do not have anywhere else to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gunther. Our next speaker is Jonathan Green.
All power to the people.
I am a revolutionary.
I am a revolutionary.
I am a revolutionary.
Right on. So, essentially, to some objecting points, if you're going to, and Jonathan Green, resident and business owner, if you're going to have the idea to demolish, to rebuild, the properties that are here are not being built to any type of quality. If you're talking about affordable housing being a potential solution, yes, I do agree that housing is a dire, urgent need. But if a 2x4, prior to COVID, a 2x4 costs $2 and some change. Now, it costs about $8. If basic raw materials... If basic raw materials are unaffordable, how can you produce affordable housing? That means the same houses that went up at Hallmark, the same houses that went up at Belmont de Villers, the same houses that will go at Malcolm Young will not be affordable for the demographic that lives in Pensacola. The demographic, we claim to be so diverse that we talk about the black residents who have jobs, but how many of them are supervisors? How many of them are directors? How many of them are not making minimum wage? So what's affordable and for who? And I misspoke, the 23 million was the police budget some years ago, the 11 million that went into Bayview. So we can have all these funds for specific pockets of areas to our liking and choosing. I implore you to consult with your city attorney regarding the case of Grubstein versus Urban Renewal Agency of City of Tampa, which the Supreme Court of Florida in 1959 ruled, in regard to public use, for a use to be public, it must be fixed and definite. One which the public has such an interest and manners of enjoyment must be within the control of that state independent of the rights of the private owner of the property appropriated to the use. The use of the property cannot be said to be public if it can be gained, said, denied, or withdrawn by the owner. Now, the public interests must dominate the private gain. I say all of that in the document that I provided earlier. If you're going to consider demolition, consider the historic nature and the affected communities and the fact that if you're going to gentrify areas, put tax caps on so that way the communities who have been in these areas historically are not driven out of these communities because they can no longer afford the taxes to live there because they're on fixed incomes.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Next speaker is Walter Wallace.
Ladies and gentlemen, what I'm going to address on this issue is this. Number one, I oppose the city putting any more money into Malcolm Young, because I have a problem. In my center, I've been trying to get parking, I didn't culture. You don't have no money. I remember when we first got into putting Woodland and Legion Field on the LST, and me and Commissioner Maitre, you take care of the basketball, I'll try to provide the I didn't culture. It seemed like when it comes down to African-American kids, you think that's all they can play is basketball and football. So my point is this, if you don't have no money to put in Willen Heights, I don't see none of the city money coming to Malcolm Young. Because we, to me, have a lot of place for our kids to do athlete. We need to put our money, and you're talking about, and that's another thing the city council and the, for the housing council, I'll be addressing them. You don't have no definition what is affordable. I can build a half a million dollar house, and I'm making a million dollars a year. Yes, it's affordable. If I'm making $85,000 a year, I can't afford a half a million dollar house. Right now, you have no definition about what is affordable and what is the criteria for somebody acquire a full of housing. You get back down there on Black Street when they built that complex down there. You know what happened? You let people went in there, you gave them about $10,000. Two years, they stayed in the place and sold it for a profit. The city didn't get no money from them. And when you look at all the development, sometime, I think, yeah, the city of Pensacola is not a development company. We're supposed to be about people, improving people in life, and we doing lots of gentrification. We building places where people can't stay, or in there where stay in the community. I know I look at my community all around H Street when I was a kid throwing paper. It don't look like the community that I was raised in. But my point is this, if you cannot put no money in my community, I don't want you to put no money somewhere, and then half of the people going, "You and Malcolm Young do not live in the city." You know, and that's one thing, we always have a problem that the county people use our city facilities and the county don't invest no money. But all I'm saying is this, I oppose any money going to Malcolm Young from the city conference. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Our next speaker is LaWanna Hamilton.
Hello, my name is LaWanna Hamilton. I am a business owner and I am also a homeowner. I'm here to ask that we not demolish Malcolm Young. I'm a representative of East Pensacola Student Athletic Program at McGee Field. It's a nonprofit organization. We're located on the east side of Pensacola, and we serve our youth from four to 15 within an athletic scope of football, cheerleading, and baseball. As our board has been reconstructed to like-minded individuals with the vision to grow and extend the services that are much needed to the youth that we serve. This spring, we plan to extend our athletic program by adding basketball based on our children's and parents' interest and participation. However, after numerous calls to all of the city parks and recreation buildings that have gyms available, we couldn't find a home to accommodate our program. So we'll have to put that on hold for next year. Being told that there were no times or days available for practice games or conflicts due to the gyms having their own leagues, we have the capabilities to expand our program to offer other services besides athletics, such as tutoring, which we currently provide at our bleachers, at our football field, or in an office that holds no more than six people. We would like to add performing arts for some of the young youth girls that we have in our program and other areas of our students' interest, but only if we have the facilities to push our visions into actions. We have other community centers here. Little to none offer the services actually to the youth in the community. They're being booked for private entertainments, yoga classes, exercises, and fitness centers that are not available for the youth in the area unless they become a member of that organization or pay a fee to use the facilities. If we all could just picture how McDonald's used to be, an attraction for children with fun characters, playgrounds, and kid-friendly meals. Now you see booth with chargers for your phones, free Wi-Fi, bar height tables, and full coffee shop setups. This is what's happening to our community resource centers here in Pensacola. Our program can benefit from saving Malcolm Young. We actually had events planned there right before the announcement that it will be closed, three days, actually. So we had to find a different location. I just wanted to say, you know, with saving the Malcolm Young Center, there is need for it. We can put it to use. We can do more, a greater good that actually serves our youth. That's not for the senior citizens, like at Bayview, they got rid of their gym. Some of our children live right in the area of Willen Heights and are not allowed to use the facilities. So, I mean, I'm sorry, that's my time, but don't demolish the building.
Thank you, Ms. Hamilton. Next speaker is William Clay.
I have a question, Council President. I have a question. Ms. Hamilton, you said something about you had kids in District Five that were using Willen Heights for what? Will you repeat it, please? I missed that part.
Yes.
Can you come to the microphone, please? I'm sorry.
We have a lot of our children that come out of the area of Pensacola Village and those areas that are on the east side of Pensacola, and with our athletics being as scattered as it is, we play football on the east side at McGee Field, but we do baseball on the west side at Raymond Riddle and at Bill Gregory, and we were trying to add more programs, but we just don't have facilities to house those programs or extend the services that the children and the parents are requesting.
And you don't have the field at all?
I'm sorry?
You don't have the field at all?
We have a football field, but we want to extend, like tutoring services when we do cheerleading practices and things like that. We're basically weather-oriented program, so if it rains, we have nowhere for our children to go. We have no inside facilities to help these children with tutoring, dance, arts, things of that nature. That's what we're trying to expand our services into. So we could benefit, our program could benefit from this, from the gym.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Mr. Clay.
For those that you don't know my name, my name is William Clay. I've been here the last two months, and tonight, I'm here to see if the city of Pensacola is still a tax-exempt organization. Are you federally tax-exempt, state tax-exempt, county tax-exempt? Are you still tax-exempt? If you're still tax-exempt, what I would like to have access to, if either one of you, someone up here can tell me how I can gain access to your federally tax-exempt protocol as far as compliance with public dollars, as well as your state tax-exempt compliance for federal dollars, as well as county tax-exempt compliance for tax, county dollars. Because I would like to see, for in further, if I want to go in and research, if I want to venture into something with public dollars and you have RFP out there, I would like to know the protocol as far as compliance, how you advertise, say, construction job for Florida Chapter 60D or goods in service on the Chapters 287, to see if everything is in protocol or how I should be in protocol in response to the RFP. Do you have a compliance person right now on the books or serving as a compliance person for the city that I can speak to in regards to that? So you don't have a compliance person?
Absolutely. What I'd say, just as a recommendation, if you're asking, of course, we can look into anything you like, all our budgets, everything else is public record, so certainly you just have to get an inquiry in writing, and we can provide you whatever you.
Okay, what I'm saying, what I'm saying, Mayor, is this, for those, for your federally exempt tax dollars you would be paying, okay, who's the compliance person for the federal, for that federal level? Likewise, for the state where you're tax-exempt, who's in charge of that? How do we know that all of your local agencies here or whatever utilities you have, are they in compliance? How do we know that? And even posting, like I say, posting contracts, posting goods and service contracts, how we in 287?
Thank you, Mr. Clay.
One more thing, if there's anyone here I can come and speak to, so I can get that information.
If you have your email address or leave your information, we're happy. We have an entire finance department to answer whatever questions that you have, and everything you're referring to, contracts, all of those things are all public record, so we'll be able to provide you what you need. Thanks.
Next speaker is Jermaine Williams.
Jermaine J. Williams, I'm going to say the resident. I know a lot of you all. I've worked with y'all in the past. I've addressed this council before, but I just want to walk you through something in my life. So when I was growing up here in Pensacola, just moved back here from Jacksonville, I lived right a couple blocks from Fricker Center. I ignored Fricker Center coming up. I did not attend Fricker Center. I chose the streets, and that led to several arrests, that led to drug use. At 14, started a long drug history for me, which graduated to cocaine, which ended up being a 13-year cocaine addiction. Since then, I have went eight years sober. I've addressed DCF last year. I work with in the mental health field, making sure others don't go down that road. But I can't do nothing but help to think that what if I would have took Fricker Center serious and took the talents that I had as a young man serious in sports? You know, I had that choice. These young faces y'all see, in that area, y'all taking that choice away from them with Malcolm Young. So I urge you to really think about what you're doing here, because one thing I could say, I mean, like, look, we all, I watch WEAR, they celebrate all the time, like the young man, Weather Spoon, at Seattle, Rookie of the Year his first year, but my goodness, he had the opportunity to hone that craft because he was able to have parks of recreation in his area. People over in that area would not have that. And think about these young faces when you make this decision, Mayor Reeves, you got the opportunity to be a different kind of mayor than we had in the past. So please, recognize what you have. I mean, Charles Bear, Delarian, Tenny Iday, all of you guys, man, you got the opportunity to be on the right side of history. What we gonna do? And not only am I saying save Malcolm Young, add two, three more at Malcolm Young throughout the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Our next speaker is Jero Saul Young.
It's Jero Saul, but you can call me Saul, so peace be upon you. I'm a resident of Pensacola, and I don't own anything, but I'm here to urge you that the Malcolm Young Center should be restored, and I argue that demolishing it will actually hurt the homeless community and the working people of Pensacola. I lived here for almost two years, and I spent most of that first year homeless, because this city, like many other cities, favors profit over people. There is a deficit of almost 1,000 rental homes and apartments in this city, and our existing accommodations are outrageously expensive. Human beings have been priced out of their homes with nowhere to go. Now, I want to repeat that part because some people, some people are numb to the housing crisis, and it's not their fault. You know, this is how this city is, this is how this city has become, but unfortunately, I do have to remind this room of the humanity of our homeless population. I was, and they are, the biggest victims of your neglect. Your disregard for unprofitable people and buildings showcases your chase for money, what it will always come down to. The Malcolm Young Community Center was built in 1961, 1961, okay? The E.S. Cobb Resource Center was built in 1966, just seven years later, but the Cobb Center had at least two rehabilitations in the last 30 years, and when voting on whether to conduct a full building assessment on the Cobb Center, you didn't hesitate. It was a six-to-zero vote. The Malcolm Young Gym did not get the same treatment from the city. I mean, it is up for demolition, so clearly, the community space is yet another victim of your neglect. You pick and choose who gets nice things, and it's never we, the people. It is we, the landlords. It is we, the developers. Well, we, the people of your city, urge you to rearrange your priorities. Stop the demolition of the Malcolm Young Gym and start investing in us. Invest in your people and the spaces that we have made our own. We all know that if you demolish this building, you are going to sell the land off to some developer that will build unaffordable housing, and by doing that, you'd be investing in the people that are keeping the city's rent at an intolerable level and throwing us in the streets. The Malcolm Young Gym was once a beloved space, open to the public, that allowed every child the equal opportunity to just have fun. Now, it's a reminder that in this world, in this city of Pensacola, there are people like y'all who don't see every child as equal. If you did, we wouldn't be debating whether you should demolish or restore the space. Restore the gym, invest in the people of this city. Thank you and have a blessed evening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tommy Young. Our next speaker is Tommy Young.
Good evening. Man, I haven't seen you guys in a while, huh? But I've come to speak from behalf of the East Pensacola Organization, those kind of. So in looking at this particular piece of property and what's going on, in my opinion, I think it may be best to possibly table it tonight. I don't know if the demolition vote right now, is it, is it hard pressed? Because based on the room and public opinion, this is a seriously tough vote. I don't, you know, I don't know if that was been taken under consideration of how many people would be heartfelt about this particular property. But coming from the point of a former board member of East Pensacola, for years, we had tried to actually occupy this space. The last time, well, one of the times when we first tried to occupy because we only were a one-dimensional program. And in that breath, thank you all for the funding and things that you have done for McGee Field up to this date, beautiful thing. I thank you for the ones that were on the board to vote for that. But we are a one-dimensional organization. We have just a football field. After that season, we have to disperse our kids all over the, all over the county to actually have programs. Northeast Pensacola have a comprehensive complex. West side of Pensacola has a comprehensive complex. We do not have a comprehensive complex. Through the Hollis T. Williams redevelopment, there's opportunity there. And I think what people are afraid of is that if there was promises made, that they may not be kept in the future. And that's the challenge because people look at like developments like Hawkshaw. It was told that it was going to be affordability there. It's told that it's going to be workforce housing and that. We see how it ended and it ended up into a legal battle between contractual words and I don't want to get into that. But I want you to consider this. If you did not have that space and you take that space out of the recreational realm, where, what other space would you put the youth and the people that are using it? Ms. Ladono, she was, she was right. There's, we've tried forever to get other space and other gyms. And what we're told is, our schedule's full. There's nothing we could do. There's not, there's no space. So in representation of the East Pensacola Rattlers, we need a space. I know there's other people that's vying for that space for whatever reason, but we need a space. And if you do decide to go forward to the demolition of this particular structure in structural form, it would be my wish and my hope that you earmark to site, the site, to reconstruct another facility that can be utilized by the community and the youth. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Next speaker is James Washington.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Councilmen and women. It's been five months. Been dealing with this for five months and I know you all are tired. I just want to say, a lot of people have spoken tonight. I think it's pretty much the consensus of the community. It wasn't just us. And East Pensacola Rattlers, I feel everything that you guys are saying. You know, because everybody said, well, we got 90-some parks, but I don't think the people that's talking out on the front lines dealing with these kids and what's going on in the community. No, there's no gym space. It's not. And it's raining in the summer or too hot. Wintertime is too cold and you can call these facilities and they are, and we've been fortunate because we've been going at it and trying to, you know, get those spaces. And we were fortunate to get one or two, but we have 10 teams. And I see what they're doing. They are growing. We've been there. So they gotta have the capacity. And when you grow, it can't just be for the season. You want to have a year-round program because those kids have something they need to be doing positive year-round. So I would just like to say, you know, if you would, and we'll be happy to partner with you guys. We can help with the tutoring. We can help with a lot of different things, but we can't help with the gym. We don't have one. We're trying to find a space. It's frustrating because you see all these kids, and we have a lot of kids coming down here, and they really getting a civics lesson. They getting a real education. And they seeing how things, how the system works. But if we can find, you know, because we're trying to, we're trying to make, help these kids eat first graduate from high school. If we can get them to graduate from high school, after that, they can go in the military, they can go to college, they can take a vocational trade. A lot of these inner-city kids, they don't have that opportunity. They don't have, their parents don't have a college fund. Their parents don't have, and a lot of time, they're single parents. Sometimes, parents incarcerated. These kids dealing with a lot of different things and nobody to advocate and speak for them. So we are here. There's a gym there. It's available. Just a little, you know, little touch-up. We think the gym could work, not only just for our program, for other programs. Because we trying to make a different life of kids. I mean, the kids, our future. And homelessness, that was kind of created, you know, here. You close down Escambi Yarms, we didn't replace it. Algonquin Court, we didn't replace it. So, you know, if you close down that, you should build one. Low-income housing. I didn't say affordable. I'm not saying attainable. I'm not saying whatever, whatever. Let me just make it plain, low-income housing. And then those homeless people have a place, but thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Washington. Our next speaker is Doris Hayne.
Well, good evening, council members, Mayor. I'm here to, just to speak on the Malcolm Young building. I did write some notes. I didn't come here to speak, but I just felt led to speak. But my name is Doris Hayes and I am a resident and I'm a property owner. And I also been here and a business owner. I've been here since 88. Too long, rather. I kind of like Pensacola now, but when I moved here, I saw everything that's happening here now. I said, you know, I saw the building, the construction, all of the stuff. Because, you know, we didn't have, you didn't have houses and building, businesses growing in this, in this city during that time. But now, it's like, everything is moving forward now. And it's going, people are building, construction around, houses building everywhere, you know? And people are losing property because of, you have different contractors coming in. When I, when I moved here, I saw the land, the vacant, you know, so much land here. And I spoke to you all before about this. And now, so much growth here. So now, you trying, people are coming in and you, now you trying to demolish buildings. But you know what? I'm gonna tell you something. I was speaking with a doctor, orthobiologist, two days ago. And he said, you know what? This city is really going forward, but he said, they missing out one thing. You talking about demolishing how, a building, like the Malcolm Young Building, what you need to be doing is trying to, coming from a state, Houston, Texas, seeing everything that's built there, you know, lights, you know, tiniata. You don't see lights around here, you know, all this construction building around here around in Pensacola. But what you should be really focusing on, like the doctor said, they should be focusing on also the traffic here. You know, people are moving here, yes. The economy is growing here. But I'm gonna tell you something. You better be looking at the traffic, freeways, interstate. You got to build some interstates because if you don't, I mean, cars gonna be on top of each other. But anyway, what I'm here for to say too, is to do not demolish Malcolm Young Building. Do not demolish Malcolm Young Building. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna say this, and I'll sit down, look around at the children. You know, everyone has spoken here today and I think their vote counts. Everybody have spoken here, their vote should count. I think it's the majority. And thank you for giving me this time.
Thank you, Ms. Hayne. Next speaker is Sam Alvarado.
Hello, hello. My name is Sam. I live here in Pensacola. I actually am not originally from here. I'm originally from Denver, Colorado. And upon coming here for college when I was younger, one of the things I loved the most about Pensacola was the very simple fact that it's different from everywhere else on this Emerald Coast. It is a jewel of treasure and history. It's a storied place that has been not only a cradle of naval aviation, but the history of the civil rights movement is here. Whenever you go downtown, there are these wonderful historical plaques telling you about how people have struggled and fought for equality and for to be cared about as a community. Not to be just simply thought of as just, oh yeah, they're the people who live here. The actions of demolishing the Malcolm Young Gym is a great disservice to the locals who actually love and treasure this place. Personally, I really don't see why it's not worth it to simply investigate how can we potentially save this architectural marvel that people come around from all the small towns in Escambi County, Santa Rosa County, to appreciate this city and all of the unique features of it? Realistically, when we demolish things like this and say it's in the name of affordable housing, if we're gonna make it affordable, we realistically need to put it as what is affordable. A lot of people who work in downtown Pensacola cannot afford to live in downtown Pensacola, including people who are in the medical field, who we recently called healthcare heroes. We love them. They were here for the pandemic, but where are we for them? Why are we not doing more for the people of this city? To invest in local infrastructure that supports the growing population? As we understand, many people have moved here with their families. They want their kids to be able to experience living in a wonderful place. However, that requires that we have third spaces. We are seeing all across this country, including in one of the best cities in the country, New York City, where we do not invest in third spaces, where people cannot be home and not at work, but a place where they can gather in community. This place, specifically the Malcolm Young Gym, is a wonderful place for children to have community with children. Children deserve to be cared about in the way that we invest in their infrastructure as well. We realistically need to do that so that our future, the kids, can really grow to their full potential. That way, they can really grow those friendships that will see them wherever they go. Oh yeah, I may leave this place in the future, but I'll always remember the time I spent in Pensacola and all the friendships I made here. As an adult, imagine being a kid and caring about this place and knowing every year, the Winter Camellias, all the beautiful places like the Malcolm Young Gym, where they made those friendships. So I wish you all the best in making a good decision and thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarado. Our next speaker is Sanithia Goss.
Hello, it's me, Sanithia again. I just want to address you all again because since the last time I was here, I'm very concerned. I talked about the children needing hope. When we left the last meeting, the children were talking about how they were now concerned about Cobb Center because they were hearing how we talked about these things that they looked forward to as a problem. And they didn't like it. And I tried to console them and tell them, it's gonna be okay. Well, when I got all of the tutoring kids and everybody home, my own children, everybody knows Rowan, they had a little discussion. And Rowan and Remy, they thought, it's not going to be okay. And do you know what they said in the car? They said, well, when they tear down Malcolm Young, what's gonna happen to the area around it? What's gonna happen to it? And I said, well, one of the things they're talking about is attainable housing. You know what they said to me? You sure it's not Central Park? You sure it's not a lake? And I don't know if you guys are students of history, but these children are. These, these children are learning and growing every day and they are learning from the things that the adults have done. And they're not proud of what we've done. I had a room full of students looking for help just the other night in a little space. 20 kids. And I had one kid get upset because there wasn't enough space. A child who is trying to turn his life around and I don't have space to give him the help that he needs. That's what Malcolm Young is supposed to be for. These kids need somewhere to go, a space where they can get help with their academics. A space where they can go where they are not on the street. It is unfair. It is unfair to the kids that I teach, not only with this organization, but the teach, the kids that I teach at Workman Middle School, the kids that I tutor from home and all the other elementary schools around town. The kids that I work with that play for the Rattlers. And I don't have space to welcome them in. I would love to be able to help each and every one of those kids because those kids have approached me because they've learned about what we've doing, what we're doing. And I can't give them any hope. We are sitting here erasing the light from these children.
Thank you, Ms. Goss. We'll now close the public speakers, speaker section of this item and move on to our council discussion. Mayor Reeves?
Yeah, so thank you, everybody, for coming out and agree or disagree. We always appreciate people being engaged with everything. I want to talk about a few different things quickly and then certainly, this is, you know, a discussion for the council and provide any feedback that we can. You know, there are some people that, again, that have mentioned that they've been to several of these meetings. I think there was a comment that this has happened quickly. I think it's been over several meetings now, many familiar faces. One misunderstanding, maybe from some of the folks that were here earlier, is that this, or the comment that this is being taken away. I think there, you have to understand in context, this building was leased to one, one school three years ago and it was going to be in that school's possession for the next 17 years. So while I understand, and I think it highlights the discussion that we're having as a community right now, which is the need for space, of which, I can't speak for this council. I certainly understand and as we assess that, it may show as we do our entire assessment of all of our buildings, that we need more space. I don't disagree with that. But needing more space as a community and deciding to throw $3 million for 15 more years of life at this particular building doesn't make, we can believe both of those things and disagree on both, on one of those. So the Cobb Center was mentioned. I'm, I am proud and thankful of our team for jumping on the Cobb Center so we weren't all going to be sitting here in another five years to have this difficult decision that has to be made. So Cobb Center, we, has a chance to be saved. Cobb Center can be quake wrapped. It can be because it's not in near the condition that Malcolm Young is in. That's number one. Number two, we talk about different community centers. I don't know if you paid attention to it in the last couple of weeks. Fricker Center is going to get $9.5 million of grant money, which is the single largest amount of grant money that any community center in the history of the city has ever gotten. $5 million for repair and renovation of their existing building. $4 million for, to make it truly a community center. And what that means is educational opportunities through Career Source, health outcome improvement and opportunity, and education opportunity. The real, true definition of a community center, $9.5 million, largest we've ever seen. $9.5 million, largest we've ever seen. So, I'm proud of that fact, that we are, and I think maybe you're staying around for the Gibson School conversation, of which we're trying to conserve and save. So, there's really two schools of thought here. One philosophical, about we need more space in the community, of which I don't disagree necessarily. But that, if I'll use the same house analogy, it's one thing to say, if you have a leak in a roof, that why should you tear it down? If we have no walls or no roof, that's the situation we're in at Malcolm, and it's the one we're on the way to in Cobb, that we're gonna stop and save. So, excuse me. So, and to Mr. Gunther's point, all I can tell you is, we've had our building official, we've had outside engineers, I certainly respect his opinion, but to take at someone's word coming to speak up here, all we can go off of is what our engineer has told us. What he has claimed to tell you on the phone, that he hasn't told us, as you can understand, you know, we go off of what we have in writing and what they have told us, and we have been given no indication that it's anything but the information that's already been provided to you. So, again, as I said, I feel like we can have a conversation as a community about how we can save spaces, how we can continue to create space for the community. We can also have a conversation that $3 million for 10 years, maybe 15 more years of life versus scenarios like significantly less than that to get more life out of Cobb, $9.5 million at Fricker, and opportunities like if the Lakeview Center for $2.9 million, that's 10 to 15 years old now, it would be the same amount to purchase that right now, be done, than it would for us to be able to renovate Malcolm Young and get 10 more years out of it. So, there's the difference between sound decisions, there's a difference between sound decisions with taxpayer money, as well as philosophical decisions we can make as a community that make this place great. The last thing I'll say, the last thing I'll say is, to understand how this community, and I can use an existing example now, is going to have to approach affordable housing, is there is no such thing as affordable housing that doesn't require a subsidy, right? So, you cannot expect any developer, anyone, to go buy a piece of property and turn it into affordable housing. That will never happen. So, the city's role, the government's role, and I'll use Pensacola Motor Lodge as an example, that's an existing one right now, that the CRA spent close to $1 million on to preserve 28 units. And our expectation going into it, as you'll see the letter of intent come out this month, is not to sell it. The only way we're gonna be able to provide housing for people who need it, is that that is our subsidy, the CRA's spend on that property is the subsidy that allows the difference between market rate housing, what you guys are speaking of and there's anxiety about, and making it affordable for the people who want to be able to afford it. So, if you're asking my opinion, which there's a lot of presumptions about that, about if the mayor wants to support affordable housing here, how will it work? The previous conversation before it was leased 20 years to someone else was about surplusing the property. I've never said we would surplus the property, because that doesn't allow us the subsidy. What I see is, this gives us the opportunity to take the asset that we have, which is this property, and that means, and we have examined, and if you go back and look, we had a previous meeting, about how many affordable units can go here, who we partner with to make that happen, and we would have a letter of intent, just like we have at Motor Lodge, that says, show us how you have been successful in creating affordable housing. So, that's what it takes. It takes city-owned property for us, for that to be the give, in order for someone to create affordable livable rents and livable housing. So, that's where we are with it, guys, and, you know, it's certainly open to discussion.
No, ma'am. I've been pretty lenient tonight, but the public input session is over. I'm just gonna go back to, one of the first things I read tonight is to refrain from engaging in any activity that might interfere with the orderly conduct of the meeting. And we gave everybody an opportunity to speak, no one up here interrupted anyone, and we're gonna ask that you don't do the same whenever we're speaking up here. Our next speaker is Councilman Baer.
Thank you, Mr. President. And as someone who has served as the council president, has experienced some rough turbulence during a meeting, I know that our rules are there for a reason, and I understand that sometimes you have a gut reaction to something that's said up here. But I just wanna start with a couple of things. Jermaine, it's good to see you. When I first met you, you had some challenges in your life. I'm glad to see you have come, you know, to where you are now. You've overcome a lot, and you shared that up here. Doris, you mentioned came here in 1988. I also came here in 1988 to go to school at the University of West Florida. Downtown, a lot of things were very different in 1988. And I was proud to serve on council from 12 to 16. However, I do feel badly that I didn't take more of an interest in what the condition of our buildings was in the city, because I think we could have stemmed some of the issues we have at this point if we weren't too busy building two new neighborhood centers. One, which Mr. Wallace mentioned, was never really completed. There's not enough parking, they didn't put a kitchen in, it's really not completely functional as it should be. And then we took another one, and we gave it to an organization on the west side of town, which we really have no control over. That organization uses it pretty exclusively, have some great programs, but it's not open to the general public. And then, and I will say this, my name is on both those buildings, and I'm a little bit embarrassed that we allowed other buildings to falter the way they have while we were building new buildings. And then we turn around, we build Bayview. We take a facility, it was mentioned by someone, that was used for basketball and other things. It was not in great shape, but we replaced it with an event center. So, let's not confuse anyone on what Sanders Beach and Bayview are. They're event centers, they are not neighborhood centers. You can call them a neighborhood center, but they're not really for the neighborhoods. So, we've got two nice event centers. Meanwhile, the places where kids go to learn and play, and we've let those go. This particular facility, I've only been there a handful of times, and I know it used to, I think at one time it was a polling place. I think I campaigned down there one time, when I think when I ran for mayor. But we have allowed it. We are to blame, not necessarily the people up here, but the city is to blame for what has happened there and the decline of that building. In this, the mayor talked about, you know, we've got lots of proof saying that this building is in really bad shape. We've had an engineer look at it, engineering firm, they did not engage the LISA group, or whatever their name was, to do the same type of valuation that was done on Cobb. So, we really, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison, look at Cobb and Malcolm Young Center on what the condition is. And if you look at the photos, I mean, there's some really bad photos of Malcolm Young, of the arches. There's some really bad ones of Cobb, too. I mean, there are missing pieces of wood, you can stick a screwdriver into that as well. But yet, we've gotten a bunch of money for Cobb to do some things, and for Fricker Center, we have, too. We've gotten grant money. Why couldn't we have gone for some money for Malcolm Young? I think we probably could have, we just chose not to. I mean, we're just not even trying on Malcolm Young. And so, you know, it's our failure, I think. If this building's torn down, there will not be a neighborhood center built there, I can tell you that right now. We can't afford to do that. The cost has gone up so much, as was mentioned by a gentleman earlier, the cost of a 2x4 has gone up significantly. So, just building a new facility would be, we can't afford that. So, I think our best thing to do would be to try and go for grant money, or, you know, we've been presented with a possible solution, which is the quake wrap, you know, and I think that can work. I think, you know, we need to give that a try. All this, it's very interesting, this whole process that we've gone through, and people have deviated from speaking just about the demolition, so I'm going to as well. But this council also serves the CRA, which is a very uncomfortable thing, because we're actually approving what we did. Okay, I'm not, because I voted against it in the CRA, too. But during Mayor Grover Robinson's term, this city council abdicated its authority and its operational duty over the CRA and gave that to the mayor. So, the mayor pretty much has operational control of the employees and the CRA. And I really don't think it makes sense for us to continue to be the CRA. I think what the citizens need, what you deserve, is to have another group of people that maybe could look at this with a different lens than the city council, and then you'd have two sets of eyes looking at these things, so we wouldn't just be rubber-stamping something we've already done. In other cities, they do that, they allow citizens to serve, and they have different groups. So, I do not support the demolition of this facility tonight. I think I'm probably in the minority up here, and I wish we were in a different place, but this group has already voted to demolish it, acting as the CRA. And I wanna thank everyone for coming out here, because, you know, the most important thing I do as a council member is listen to citizens, and whether it's here, whether when they call me on the phone, it's just listening. And that's what you brought me in to do, and that's what people elected me to do, is listen to you. And I am listening, and I think this building needs to stay, and I think it needs to be used for the kids. Having worked in youth programs before, I know how important it is to have facilities, and we're doing a poor job providing those. And I just, and to touch on the affordable housing issue, since it's been brought up as well, we've got things in the works right now with Gibson, you know, if that goes through, we'll have that location. We have the Motor Lodge. The Motor Lodge is in really bad shape, I've seen the photos. It's gonna take some work to get it back into shape, so we can actually put people in there, I think. But I think we're trying some things with affordable housing, I don't think this is the location for it. So, thank you all very much.
So, just to be sure, this is an incredibly uncomfortable position for any of us up here, no matter what side of this we fall on. I, myself, spent lots of time in Malcolm Young. My son played his entire basketball league there through his years. He's a lot older now, and it's been downhill for a long time. And the reality is, you say, why, when Cobb is so close in age and this one's not? Because there was money put into Cobb. There was money put into Cobb, there was not money put into Malcolm Young, and we let it continue to go downhill. And what scares me tremendously is, you guys talk about all these different pots of money, but they're really different pots of money. You have designations from one to another. You've got, I've gotten the calls, what about LOST? If it wasn't built with LOST, you can't use LOST to repair it. You've got all these different classifications on what can be used where, and it's not near as clear as just moving it or doing it. So, what scares me is, the same pot of pot of money to save Cobb would be split with Malcolm Young, where we might end up with two dilapidated buildings instead of one fully repaired and one not. Another thing here is, if we are gonna spend that money, do we not purchase an already existing facility that would house the same thing at Lakeview? That is an option for the money right now, and it's good to go. That's a question. These are all questions, by the way. Do we save a dilapidated building, or do we not? And once again, this is very difficult for me. And once again, going around these corners of so many questions and so many misnumbers, affordable housing is defined. It's defined by the state, it's defined by different organizations in the state, and just for everyone's understanding, affordable housing, generally speaking, is from 30% AMI to 120% AMI. And AMI is the average median income of the area. So, if the average income, the average median income was, just going easy, $50,000, then 30% of that to 120% of that, this is not just spitting out affordable. That's what is defined as affordable. So, who does that hit? That hits your teachers, your firemen, your police officers, me and my other, I'm a teacher, all right? So, this is the kind of person that's from that income, your CNAs to your, probably not even RNs, they outprice me in this kinda stuff. So, it's very defined, and no one, no one has any definitive idea of what would happen to that property at this point. There's just ideas, there are just ideas. So, but to this, do we spread ourselves too thin and not keep one going? We've, you know, I mean, when you talk about us reducing our assets, what really reduced is, you used to have the YMCA on the northeast side, you had the YMCA on the west side, neither of those are there. That, so the city maintained its stuff, other stuff dissolved. You're talking about, we don't have basketball leagues, the city runs basketball leagues. I was there Saturday, watching basketball games at Vicry. The city does these kinds of things. It's not that we are out of the business of this. We just, we moved those Malcolm Young games to Vicry Center, and that's where they are. So, when other organizations are coming in and saying, we can't get scheduled, well, that's because we're running leagues there. We're running city leagues in those locations. So, there's so much here that complicates this, and it's not as near as straightforward as just save a building. By the way, I'm gonna say this one more time, and I'm sorry about this for all the kids in here, but none of the kids here were playing there, unless they were members of Lighthouse Christian and Academy. It has, in 2019, the schedule had 10% use for the public, 10%. That has decreased since 2019. This building has not been in public use. That's the unfortunate shame of us up here, of allowing our facilities that taxpayers pay for to be used by others. So, when other interests are coming up and saying, well, save it for us, or save it for us, if we save this stuff, we have to save it for the public. We have to get out of this business of allowing this special interest use of these facilities. And that is absolutely what I'm for. But right now, I'm having a hard time being stretched, because I wanna save Cobb. It's in better shape. I'm concerned about potentially this center at Lakeview going away without us grabbing that up while we can. So, I'm just, I'm torn. That's where I am. Thank you.
Councilman Moore?
Great, thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, and thank you all. Thank you all for being here, for certain. These are always difficult conversations, but it is, from this side of it, despite the awkward and uncomfortable nature of it, it is always exciting to see engagement and what's going on in our community. And in some ways, there's a lot of you I hadn't seen in a few years, so it almost feels like a family reunion, to see people again. Maybe a family reunion on like a presidential election year, where you know this is about to get heated. But I do wanna start, too, saying, thank you, Ms. Hamilton, Mr. White, Mr. Washington, and Mr. Wallace, for your investment, Mr. McCarthy, your investment in youth, right? Mr. Williams, I love your story. And ultimately, I think when we paused this discussion a couple of meetings back, that was at the core of it, that you can't hear the work that J.B. Washington's doing and not be compelled or touched in some way to recognize that the opportunity, as he said, he's fishing with the sports bait, and he's changing lives. He's empowering young people to see that there is more. Like Mr. Williams said, to say, hey, there are opportunities for you, and there is a different life. And one thing I love about it is that you got the full spectrum of this community participating in the Titans programs. You got kids from across the full spectrum of this community, I think it's outstanding. And I think that it compels us, that we have to take a hard look at that, and we've got to provide some sort of infrastructure for those programs. If the demand hasn't been met, we in some way have to provide the supply to meet that demand, because it's transformational, and it ties to the very hurdles this community faces. We can throw rocks at the education system all day long, but that's the way that we participate in it. Coming back to where we're at, and it's the hard truth, and I'm sure you feel that's where I'm going, but we're talking about a demolition. And, you know, we did hit pause a couple of meetings ago on the demolition. I didn't feel personally comfortable that we had all the information before us, not anyone else's fault, I could ask questions. I didn't feel that the public had had the opportunity to have the vetting of a demolition. A demolition's permanent, and I think we should have all the information, we ought to have the engineer record here, so that we know, we're not just making an arbitrary decision. The public deserves to know all out in the light what we're making, you know, what decision we're making and on what grounds. I appreciate the Mr. Clay, the point that he was bringing this evening, with compliance, because that's a big deal for what we do. There's process, and there's regulation, there's things we have to adhere to. We can't just do the right thing any old way. We gotta do the right thing, and we gotta do it the right way. And in this case, it comes back to that, that we didn't just go hire some arbitrary engineer to go in to do the calculations. There's a process, there's a bid, there's a, you know, a notification process we have to follow. And you can't just call your uncle and say, hey, come look at this building, tell me what you think. That's the responsibility that we have, and so, we've contracted with an engineering agency, and this has been their report to us, you know, at the last meeting. their report to us. You know, at the last meeting, I didn't see anything. You know, we didn't have the empirical data. A lot of it was anecdotal. The mayor has been gracious to, you know, we've got those engineers here. We had them at a prior meeting. They've let us ask any question. So, at this point, as the question that's on the floor, whether we demolish or not, knowing there's so many other variables on the table, it's not a question of, is there community need for these transformational sports programs that are tied to educational achievement and empowering these young people? That's not a question. I want to support that. You know, it's not a question, is this a hard decision to make? Is it painful or uncomfortable? It's awful. I don't like it at all. I'm glad that the community had the opportunity to come together and have this discussion, have this dialogue, say our piece. But at this point, I don't see another way around it, that the building, according to the empirical data, not the feeling in my gut or the feeling in my heart, but the knowledge in my mind, the data that's on the table, that according to our processes says that the building has to be, you know, it's better off, it's a wise, prudent financial decision to demolish it, and then we assess our community needs after that. And that's, that's where I'm at this evening on it. I will vote to support the demolition at this meeting. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Patton?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, thank all of you for coming out. I have the same interest in hearing from the public, and I appreciate everybody's comments tonight. I guess what I would start with is that, I don't know where Councilman Moore ended, there is no doubt in my mind, and I think I've said this before, that we need to look at more sporting, sports facilities and a way to create more opportunities for athletics and for those organizations that are doing the great work that all of you are doing that spoke tonight. You know, there are at least, I think, three or four different organizations that were represented here tonight that are doing fantastic things and have need of these kind of facilities. You know, I don't know that Malcolm Young would solve, you know, the need, even if we were to keep it open, that we have. I feel that we need to make a prudent financial decision as a city. I feel the emotion and everybody's plea to save Malcolm Young, and, you know, it, it's something that draws me, honestly. But at the end of the day, you really have to take a step back and say, "If we're going to spend this money, is, are we really going to create the best thing, you know, going forward for our community?" And I've now had a chance to look more closely at the numbers, and if I really thought this could be saved for $260,000, I would vote differently, but I do not. And it's going, it's going to be expensive, and I feel like this money should be used for something that is more permanent, longer, hopefully of use, and hopefully more, you know, more than just one basketball, you know, court. And I think there is an opportunity with some of the other facilities that have been mentioned tonight to do that. If a building is nearing the end of its life, and this one is at the end of its life, trying to save it, to me, is not the right answer, and particularly when trying to save it, it's going to cost millions of dollars potentially. And so, I just don't see another smart vote that I can make other than for demolition. Now, it's been an interesting conversation tonight. Tonight, we're only voting on demolition. We're not voting on use. That is public property. It should stay in the city of Pensacola's portfolio, not be sold off. I don't think anybody up here has ever said that they would be supportive of selling off this property to a developer. So, let's just eliminate that right now as a rumor, because it's, it's not what we have talked about at all. But every one of you who have talked about needing more sports facilities have also talked about the lack of affordable housing in our community. You know, there are so many different needs that we, as, you know, public servants are trying to address, that it, you know, it's, it's tough to always kind of juggle and make sure that we have the right priorities and that we're trying to spend our money in a way that's going to create all of these things for our city. So, you know, I really wish that there was an easier answer tonight than I think the one that certainly where I'm going to end up, because I really would like to see Malcolm Young saved, but I don't think that spending, you know, that much money to potentially rehabilitate that particular property is the right answer. I think we need to look elsewhere for sports facilities, and I think there is a real commitment by the city to look at different ways that they can create more, you know, locations for, let's use basketball as an example, with, you know, even covered basketball courts outdoors as an interim, as we try to develop more indoor space. But even though, even though it's tough, I am going to support demolishing tonight.
Councilwoman Broughton?
Real quick. Okay, so, last time, when I voted in support of keeping the facility, that was because this conversation hadn't been had yet about just keeping the facility. I thought we were ahead of ourselves, and I'm addressing mine toward you because you're the council president. So, we did not have the conversation. They did not, everyone didn't get to have their input as a council. This was for CRA. But I'm glad we had that discussion now, and now that I see what some of the plans are for the area and that housing, which is definitely, definitely needed, affordable housing. I've seen, I've seen plans that will go there for affordable housing, and I support that because this is for, it's not low-income, like, say, a Pensacola Village or, or that, but like nurses, teachers, working-class folk who need somewhere to live if they want to live in the city of Pensacola. And we won't be able to do that for them unless the city puts up money. That's just in reality what it is. Now, what it costs to live in the city of Pensacola, that's really not on anybody up here, and you would have to go to other meetings and let them hear your voice. You might have to go to Tallahassee and let them hear your voice. But we're also responding to what's happening in places in the state, and we can only do what we can do and help you do, what we're doing in our position by creating affordable housing, and this is how we have to do it. So, I'll be supporting the demolition, and only if, though, only if something for lower-income people can go there.
Thank you, Ms. Broughton.
I'll just add a little bit. I think most of my thoughts have already been said by other people, but first, it's just, for me, it's very energizing to see this many people here to speak and to support a cause. There are far too many times that we come here or into our other room, and it's almost empty. And, and this is, this is what we need, and we do need your input. And that's why, you know, I said I was leaning a little bit. I saw some people looking at me, wanted me to stop some stuff, but I think power to the people. Appreciate you, you getting people involved. And I ran into Ms. Hill that was our former councilwoman the other day at the post office, and she said, "I'll see you on Thursday night," and I was excited. We were going to have some people here Thursday night. So, thank you for that. What I'm going to say next probably isn't going to make a lot of people happy in here, but unfortunately, I, I agree that I think that this building is too far gone. I have walked around it. I've stuck my arms through some of those pillars and was kind of worried that it might collapse on my arm, because it's, it's in such disrepair, the structure of that building is in such disrepair. I do believe the answers that we got from our engineers that it will cost us more to, to put that building back together than even to build a new facility that could be much better. So, because of that, I do support demolishing the building tonight. I don't see any, oh, Councilman Baer?
Thank you, Mr. President. And you mentioned one former council member that's in here. I just, anytime we get three former council members, we've got Jewel Cana-Wen, we've got Sherri Myers, and Ann Hill, it's definitely an issue that means something to the community. I mean, everyone else here, but when we see three former council members, I just, I appreciate their continued interest in what we're doing, and I know that there may be on opposite sides, at least one over here is on the opposite side, and the other two over here. I think all of us want affordable housing, and I don't disagree with, with former councilmember Jewel Cana-Wen on that. So, as I said earlier, it's just not in this location. So, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no more speakers, please vote. That passes six to one. Yeah, that's a good plan. Yeah, we're going to take a five-minute rec-